I move to nominate.
I'm sorry, okay.
Mr. Hank Sheets. That's Chairman.
Okay.
For time.
I second. The motion.
The motion passes, I guess, oh, just take a vote. Mr. Usain?
Aye.
Mr. Sheets?
Aye.
And Ms. Landergan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Almost, barely got your vote there.
I know, just barely. Okay, this is the Wednesday, June 2nd, Planning Commission meeting. We have a roll call, please.
Here.
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 The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, May 26, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Okay, if everybody'd stand with me in the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item of business is the approval of the minutes of May 19th. Do we have any questions or changes?
I move approval of the minutes.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes. Do we need to take roll on that? No. Okay, so, the minutes have been accepted with no changes. Next item's oral communications, and I see no cards for oral communications, so we'll move to the next item, item 6. Zoning appeals, none, so we're at item 7. This is new business, item A, Ninth Amendment to the amended redevelopment plan for the Central Glendale Redevelopment Project area, Ninth Amendment. Proposal is a Planning Commission finding of conformance with the general plan and recommendation to the agency and City Council of the adoption of the Ninth Amendment. The applicant is the General, Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Staff will be Mark Berry, Senior Redevelopment Project Manager, Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Recommendation from the staff is recommended that the Planning Commission approve the motion, making its report and the recommendation concerning the proposed Ninth Amendment to the agency and City Council. Barry.
Chairman Sheets, members of the Commission. The Central Glendale Project area was adopted in 1972, and since its formation, the agency has been authorized to use eminent domain to acquire property for the purposes of light illumination in the project area. That authority was most recently extended in September 1998 for a period of 12 years. As a result, the agency's current authority will expire in September, actually, the 29th of September of this year. The project area is nearing completion and will shut down on August 1st, 2015. After this date, the agency will no longer be able to undertake any projects or any kind of redevelopment activities in the central project area. It would be beneficial for the agency to keep its condemnation of authority through the end of the project to help facilitate potential projects through land assembly as they may arise over the next five years. To that end, the agency is proposing to amend the plan to extend the authority for condemnation through the life of the project area, but not to exceed 12 years from the effective date of the amendment. The reason for this is that the August 2015 deadline for project activities is set by state law. If state law were to change to permit us an extension, let's say, three years, we want the ability of the agency to have eminent domain authority to extend along with the continued duration of the plan. This will be the Ninth Amendment to the plan. It would only apply to commercial property. The amendment specifically exempts owner-occupied and rental residential property from the agency's condemnation of authority. Now, eminent domain has been used in the project area, but very, has been in very seldom cases. The most notable were for the Galleria and for the Americana, when it was required to assemble the last remaining parcels for those project sites. But with the exception of those two projects, it's been very seldomly used since, well, almost 40 years the project's been existent. And in every case that that authority was used, it was used as a tool of last resort only after all attempts to acquire the property through negotiations that affirm our good value were unsuccessful. When an amendment is proposed to a redevelopment plan, state law requires that the Planning Commission review the amendment for consistency with the general plan and make a report and recommendation to the City Council on the amendment. The plan contains language for the automatic conformance of the redevelopment plan with the general plan, and this is found in section 402 of the redevelopment plan. Because the amendment only addresses extension of eminent domain, it does not amend any other provision of the plan, and as a result, it will not create any conflict between the plan and the general plan. It doesn't affect any of the land uses that are allowed in the project area, and it doesn't amend or affect any of the development controls or standards, limitations contained in the plan. A resolution making the findings that the amendment is consistent with the general plan is attached for your consideration. The resolution would stand as the Commission's report and recommendation and would be included in a report to the City Council and presented to the agency and Council at a joint public hearing. It's currently scheduled for July 20, 2010, and at that time, they would consider adoption of the amendment. That concludes staff's brief presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Landergan.
Mr. Berry, I have a couple of questions. I just want to know just a little bit of information for myself.
Okay.
I'm reading the staff report, and it says that parcels are assembled into sites of suitable size for contemporary development. Contemporary development means?
Well, that would mean, that would be development for current standards. For example, a number of buildings in the mid-brand area were built in the '20s, and their lot size or width wouldn't really probably be a standard which a contemporary retailer today would look for. Actually, we addressed this in report to Council, which we're currently working on. You know, typical width is maybe 50 feet in a lot of cases. The tenant spaces are much narrower, 25 feet or even some cases less. And a number of just retail businesses that might want to come to the city would not find that attractive or want to actually lease a space like that. In the case where, in some cases, eminent domain could be used to assemble two spaces into one to create a larger tenant space for a potential tenant.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Commission?
Yeah, was, under the current eminent domain, it's only, or up until now, it's been, you could use eminent domain on residential? It's not, right?
Yes, you could.
You could?
Yes.
So what this would change is that it's only going to be for commercial?
Well, it would extend it 12 years, but it would only be for commercial property. I think the language says it does not allow eminent domain on which, on property upon which a person resides.
Okay, so that's different from how, what we have in our eminent domain right now?
Yes.
Right. And then, so is there a reason why we have that? Is it because we don't have much residential in our project area?
That's one reason, and two, the most, the residential stock we have in the downtown is relatively new and unblighted. The Americana condos and apartments, for example, or the condo tower next to the Nestle building just north of the 134 freeway, that pretty much covers most of it.
Just not necessary?
It's not necessary.
Okay.
No further questions?
One last question.
Go ahead.
And this is to piggyback on Mr. Usain's question. So in essence, we're only extending your ability for eminent domain for any commercial so that when the existing extension that was, that allowed eminent domain within a residential area expires, it expires. So there's no residential eminent domain after the 2011, right?
My understanding is, is once the amendment becomes effective at that point, our authority to condemn property upon which persons reside terminates.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, other questions? We just need to make the decision.
I move, I don't have a motion here, I move to recommend?
There is a resolution.
All right, I move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale and the recommendation concerning the proposed Ninth Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Central Glendale Redevelopment Project area. Do we have to include the draft EIR or the EIR?
Has the neg-dec already been adopted? Okay, but that's, that's going to be part of the, that going to be part of the Council decision?
Yes, on July 20th.
Okay. Commissioner Landergan, you can't make, you can't include, I guess, the motion if you want, that the Council give consideration to the negative declaration, but it's not required. This is only the initial step, this is not approving any project, this is just, this is just starting that process. So when they actually go to amend the plan, that's when the neg-dec will actually go for approval.
Okay. And also, I include recommending the, to the Council, approval of the negative declaration.
Second. Okay, we have a motion accepted and seconded. Take roll call, please.
Aye.
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 So the motion accepted, three votes to zero. Proposal for the Planning Commission finding conformance with the general plan and recommendation to the agency and City Council on adoption of the Ninth Amendment has been passed. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, item 7B, which is the citywide amendment, description amendments to the Title 30 of Glendale Municipal Code relating to the modifications to facilitate installation of solar energy equipment consistent with state law. Staff is Chris Ogdekean, Planner, recommendation and motion that the Planning Commission review the options proposed in the draft ordinance amending the Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code to facilitate the installation of solar energy equipment consistent with state law and provide a recommendation to the City Council on appropriate draft ordinance to adopt. Chris, will you?
We're going to, yeah, I'm sorry. Very good. Mr. Chair, Mike or Stephen, City Attorney's Office, I'm going to briefly discuss some of the legal issues, specifically, as you're aware, you've received correspondence both from the attorney of a resident, city resident, who wishes to install solar on his property, as well as a letter from the Attorney General's Office regarding their opinion that state law preamps all zoning regulation of solar energy systems, as that term is defined, includes solar panels, solar collectors, that sort of thing. And I wanted to just kind of, we discussed a little bit in the report, but I wanted to briefly discuss that issue. And there basically have been, there's certainly, there is support in the law for that proposition, that state law preamps zoning regulation because of some of the language in the statute. A number of cities have taken the view that it is preempted. Some cities have taken the view that it's not, that what is preempted by the state law is used by cities, used by cities of any discretionary permit. In other words, that cities would be required to approve it either through a building permit or some other non-discretionary permit, and the cities would be preempted from imposing any zoning regulations that are strictly designed or aesthetic related, such as regulations that would prohibit you from putting solar panels that are viewable from the right-of-way or neighbor's properties. I think there's pretty strong support in legislative history that those regulations are also preempted. So the issue with the state law, and I should address the state law, there's actually three provisions of what's called the Solar Rights Act. There's a provision in the Health and Safety Code, there's a provision in the California Civil Code, and then there's a provision in the Government Code. And what the Health and Safety Code says is exactly what it says, you can't require a discretionary permit unless the building official feels there's going to be health and safety risks, and at that point, they can require a use permit, which is a little bit odd because our building official, or building officials generally don't go around requiring use permits. It's either complies with the code or doesn't. The second statute is the Civil Code, which says that cities cannot unreasonably restrict or regulate solar installations, but they define what's reasonable and say reasonable is anything that doesn't increase the cost of a solar installation, I think by 2000, or decrease the efficiency of solar. The third provision is the Government Code, which I think that's the provision that's been pointed out to, pointed to by both the AG's office and Council for Mr. Peer, which it says that, one, obviously can't require a discretionary permit, and then the provision says that the local law is limited to those that are health and safety standard related. We did a pretty extensive review of the legislative history behind that, and again, it was, in our view, it was to address the purely aesthetic type regulation and the discretionary permit process. The law, it does, that language is strong and might lead a court to conclude that there is a preemptive effect, it's just, it's not clear. And I've talked to a number of different attorneys who represent or work with other cities, and it does seem open for interpretation. And so we're passing that information along to you, and we will also obviously be passing that information along to the Council. So those are, from the legal perspective, and Usain's getting a little bit to discuss some of the planning issues, but from legal perspective, there is that issue, we wanted to advise you of it. Some cities have, as I said, very recently adopted new codes, and they've not exempted it from all solar. I think the main ones are height and setback, where you see that seems to be the biggest concern for a lot of local agencies, and I think certainly is one for this local agency. And again, it's, there hasn't been any clear, there's no court case interpreting this, and that's, that's pretty much the extent of those legal issues as far as whether there's preemption. So happy to answer any questions on the legal aspect of it.
When you say, when you say courts haven't interpreted it yet, you mean, so there hasn't been a case on AB 20?
That's right.
Since this was passed?
Yeah, there's a lot of cases discussing what's, what?
Right, zoning.
Preemption is and what isn't.
So you're basing it off those things?
There's nothing, yeah, there's no case, there's no appellate court case interpreting this provision of the code. And I would add too, that, I should add, because we put it in the report, that there's also certainly a strong argument that certain zoning regulations, aside from, you know, zoning regulations do a lot of things besides just aesthetics. Setbacks preserve open space for air and light, there's support in the cases for the proposition that they also enhance public safety by preventing fire hazards, by preventing traffic accidents through open sightlines, that sort of thing. I think there is an open question, and it's a question that's been raised before, as to whether or not compliance with your traditional health and safety building codes is sufficient to mean that a project is safe from a health and safety standpoint, or whether or not cities can use setbacks as well. Again, I'm just throwing out all the issues that it's not, it's not a clear, and that's all I can tell you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
If I may, before Chris gets into his presentation, we, among staff, have been having lively discussions with this and with the participation of Mr. Garcia and other members of the City Attorney's Office. And the purpose of our discussion has been, what would be the best framework to offer to the Planning Commission to have this discussion so that you can freely really discuss the policies that you think are most viable and consistent with what you envision for the City of Glendale? Because this is, for us planners, this is not the first time that we come across a piece of legislation that's written in a way that's not necessarily consistent with us, the practitioners' way of approaching things. Oftentimes, we have a piece of legislation that's written by someone with the best of intentions, but with little or no regard at times to the different things that we need to balance from the interest of the community, and then balancing the pieces of local legislation that we need to pass. In this case, we are dealing, we, most planners, if not all, and all of the residents, I think, prevalently say and support solar, solar equipment and the use of renewable energies, and we are always looking for ways to not only promote those, to make the use and introduction of such equipment easy for all residents and across the community. However, we need to balance our discussions with all, everything else that's important to this community and see how that falls in the end with the legal framework. So instead of trying to interpret the language of the state legislation, we decided to step away from that from the planning standpoint among staff, and then really look at it as a planning policy and offer that discussion to you. And then, in the end, if you, you know, obviously, you will probably want to look at it for its consistency with state law and the parts of state law language that are not clear, we can have that discussion later. But we would like to urge you, to you staff, to discuss this from a planning perspective and to the extent that you want to promote solar equipment from a planning perspective along with everything else that you would like to bring into the discussion to promote the quality of life in the community. I'm keeping it vague and broad like this because I think you all understand what I'm saying, and then with that discussion, I asked Wolf and Chris to offer all of the different discussions they've had amongst the two of them from a planning standpoint and make themselves available for you as a resource to use for your discussion. With that, we are really eagerly waiting to hear your discussion.
Thanks. If I can make one more, one more point, Mr. Chair.
Garcia.
Again, the different options, obviously, they're all going to go to the Council, whether the option is to just exempt it from all zoning, and then you have two options to not exempt it, but maybe provide some minor exemptions, sort of the 10%, 20% alternatives, or other options that you may come up with today. But, and I agree with Usain, the Council, I know the Council's going to want to hear your opinions on, even if you think that the Council should exempt them all, the Council's going to want to hear your opinion, know what your opinion is as far as maybe some exemptions, but not all. They're going to want to know your opinions on the different options, not just which option you prefer.
If I may add one more thing. One good example of when the city has decided to step away from the prevalent and sometimes conventional interpretations of other laws has been the wireless communication facilities, for example. You know, it was almost a convention that you couldn't do X, Y, and Z. However, the city decided to engage in that conversation and come up with something that was probably the leadership role that the city took, and then there's no reason why you would not take advantage of this opportunity to have that kind of conversation again on this issue.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, Chris, would you please now do your presentation?
Yes, before I start my presentation, I would like to confirm that we distributed a letter received yesterday dated June 1st, both by electronic mail and by hard copy to the Commissioners. The letter came from the law firm of Schut Mahelli and Wamburger, so you received that letter.
Yes.
That's good. Let me go over my presentation and the staff report very briefly. At the, at the February, or actually, back in October, when this case was first reviewed with a couple of draft ordinances, the Planning Commission's direction was to, the Planning Commission did not think that one of the, one of the options to exempt solar installations from all zoning regulations was viable, and directed staff to elaborate on draft ordinance to the second option, which exempted, which proposed to exempt solar installation from a certain number of zoning standards. So we went back and looked at that, excuse me, and we provided a couple of alternatives to what was presented as option two at the time. Option two proposed to exempt solar installations from interior setbacks, height, coverage, and certain aspects of landscaping completely. The Planning Commission's direction at the time was to not completely exempt from these standards, but to exempt, to provide different allowances. So we provided a couple of different allowances. Option 2A, for instance, provides a 10% allowance from these standards, and option 2B provides a 20% allowance from these standards, with graphics incorporated into the staff report for visualization purposes. The Planning Commission at that meeting also asked staff to look at the possibility of expanding the list of standards from which to exempt solar installations. Staff looked closely at the standards regulated by the zoning code, and staff determined that beyond these four standards, any other exemptions would not be appropriate and lead to undesirable results. And these are noted in the staff report with some examples, one of which is, for instance, the set of parking regulations, which function as a whole, and they specify a certain number of standards for parking lot to function, or if parking facility to function properly. These standards relate to parking stall width, depth, backup space, overhead clearance, and other standards of the sort. And staff doesn't think that any exemptions from these standards would be appropriate. The second exemption that we looked into and we didn't think was appropriate was exempting of solar installation, exemption of solar installations from the street front or the street side setback, and specifically, this is per Council's direction, to not exempt these installations from the street front setback, and we exclude the street front setback and the street side setback from the list of exemptions or allowances. So in a nutshell, we provided two options, two draft ordinances, option 2A and option 2B, which provide allowances to varying degrees from certain zoning standards. Option 1, which proposed to exempt solar installations from all zoning standards, that was initially presented at the October Planning Commission meeting, was also provided in the packet in case the Planning Commission would consider it further. Having said this, I would like to add one more piece of information to my presentation. We've looked at the permits that we issued for solar systems, either photovoltaic systems or the system that use water, water-based systems. In 2010, for the data available from January to May of 2010, 18 permits were issued. In 2009, a total of 49 permits were issued, and in 2008, a total of 43 permits were issued. Typically, the planning division does not review these permits. They are handled by the Building Division, Water and Power, and the Fire Department, basically. If something does not involve, if something does not trigger a review by the zone, by the planning division, planning does not even see them, and the permits are issued administratively over the counter. So these proposals, I would say, propose solar panels on top of an existing legally permitted structure, for instance. They did not involve the storage of, the placement of water tanks, for instance, in a residential garage or some other location like that, and planning wasn't even aware of them, that they were issued. They were issued by the Building Division, basically, without planning review. They were issued by the Building Division, basically, without planning review. So, we have been issuing permits because typically, the applications that come in are, do not require any planning review, basically. I wanted to add this to my presentation. So, again, to repeat what I said, in 2010, from January to May, 18 permits were issued. In 2009, 49 permits, and 2008, 43 permits were issued. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer questions from the commission.
Any further staff comments? Mr. Lee, let the record show that Commissioner Lee has arrived and is participating.
Yeah, in your definition of a solar equipment, does that include the structures that supports the solar equipment?
Well, the definition implies structures, but structures, for instance, can imply the brackets that hold the panels together or angle the panels, or structures, for instance, that are used to maybe support a water storage system, hot water storage system, and similar structures. But I don't know if the definition would also include, for instance, building, an entire building, for instance, to support solar panels?
Yes, reading through the letter from the Attorney General and some of the definitions, and how we are viewing from the City of Glendale, from the staff, you know, the definition of the solar equipment, because one can easily interpret solar equipment to include all the structure that supports solar equipment, it seems like, from other literatures. So I just wanted to find out what Glendale, how Glendale interprets at this moment, solar equipment to be.
Well, our practice has been that if a structure is being proposed, we apply zoning standards to it. If the proposal is to install the system on an existing legally permitted structure, then that structure has a right to be there, and planning doesn't review it.
Can I chime in here a little bit? Just, I think it's a relevant question. The reason that the Attorney General raised that in her letter had to do with the particular dispute that we had regarding the property on Marion Drive. And the state, what the state law says is that a solar energy system, what's regulated by state law, is that is any solar collector or other solar energy device whose primary purpose is to provide for the collection, storage, and distribution of solar energy. And then it goes on for the different types. The second type of solar energy system is any structural design feature of a building whose primary purpose is to provide for the collection of storage and distribution of solar energy. So, to the extent you need, obviously, even on a roof-mounted system, you need, you need equipment to put, you don't just put the panels on, you need equipment. And so we agree with that, I think, but there's, that only goes so far. I don't think, and Mr. Biddeken was referred to this, I don't think you get, the statute grants the right to build any building who might, has another purpose, just so you could put, and then use the solar panel law to get an exemption from the, from the code. So, basically, what I guess what I'm trying to say is anything that's truly necessary to put the solar panels or the solar collector or the solar energy system onto the property, whether it's a roof-mounted or it's ground-mounted, whatever's reasonably necessary, I think that the state law covers that. But to the extent that it's not, a structure doesn't really have a primary purpose to provide solar energy, then I think that comes under our zoning regardless of...
What happens if the structure, or still, whatever this solar panel is on, is to serve sole purposes, to hold solar panels, but is built from the ground up? How's that applied?
Well, again, I mean, typically, I think you have, you can have a roof-mounted system or you can have a ground-mounted system. And I've seen, I've seen photos of that, and that's permissible. If that's the only place on your property where you can put them is on the ground, you obviously need something. I think where it becomes an issue is where, if you, just looking at it reasonably, if you look at a particular type of installation and it's really serving some other purpose and it just also happens to have panels on it, that's where it becomes an issue. And that's where it became an issue for us on that particular, that particular case. To us, it looked like a roof structure, a shade structure, and then it had solar panels on it. So it's a little bit different. And that was the issue, I think, that the Attorney General wrote about because the property owner's attorney had written about the same issue. But I think we have, we have maybe a stronger disagreement on that particular issue as far as whether that particular structure was exempt because we didn't feel that that was really necessary for the solar energy system to be put onto, placed onto the property.
Okay. Any further questions?
Can we talk about the interpretation of the state's law now? Basically, so I want to get a clear understanding. If we would just go based on how the state law is, with not taking zoning into consideration...
Well, and again, I should say that's...
But I mean, only public and safety requirements?
Yeah, but, and again, that's, that's sort of the issue.
Right.
It's an issue of interpretation of what...
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's how...
Yeah. Obviously, there's, there's the viewpoint, and there's, again, there's support in law for this, that, that solar energy systems are exempt completely from zoning because they don't, they're not health and safety standards. The second view is that it was never intended to preempt zoning, only discretionary designer view and designs, design standards that are truly based solely on aesthetics. So, again, back to the issues regarding view, protection, those sorts of things. That's the second view. And the third view is you can, you would be able to pose zoning requirements to the extent that you could show that they, they relate to a specific adverse impact on health and safety.
And then, if I may follow up, to go back to what Mike was saying earlier, the reason that, and planning also has had the interpretation that, we focus a lot on the primary purpose of the structure because if the primary purpose of the structure is to hold the solar panels is one thing, but if I want a trellis, and I wanted the trellis in a place where it wouldn't otherwise be allowed, and I can then stick a solar panel on top of it to say now it's protected by the state law, that's where we actually, in interpretation, we, we as the planners, and we're not lawyers, we draw the line. We say, at this point, is this a trellis or is this a structure to hold a solar panel? And there are several other places you could put a solar panel without a trellis. And whether or not we, our interpretation holds up is, you know, is, remains to be seen. We can tell that CECL was adopted in 1970, and that the first, the CECL documents were five pages, now there are 5,000 pages. And these types of discussions have given rise to that, and we expect this to continue.
Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
If I interpret what Attorney General's letter is saying is that it doesn't really matter that, you know, they are pretty specific as to anything that has to do with a solar panel, associated with a solar panel is exempt, is what the, you know, letter is pretty much saying. And, and I guess that's where, you know, I've read through this thing, I've read through, you know, some of the comments, and I mean, they're too strong a size. So, that's where I wanted to get a little bit clearer, better, I guess, understanding where we're coming from. Now, I have another question to the staff, and that is, you're proposing option two A and two B, a 10% and 20% allowance, which, let's say, the example of 7,500 square foot, you have 300 square foot addition and a 600 square foot addition of the solar panels. Mike, I just have a question as to, what is the average home, you know, when you want to install solar panels? What is the required square footage of solar panels that, that will provide electricity to that house?
What would the technical requirements be?
Well, planning has basically stayed out of that. Permits have been issued without planning review, and we don't really know how many square feet. It all depends probably on the size of the house and how much power needs to be supplied, and that varies.
Well, I, I'm a little bit thrown back now. Then, I just assume, I don't think you just grab this 10%, 20% out of the air. I'm assuming, you know, if it's a bigger house, thus, you know, the larger percentage, so that, you know, if it's a bigger house, then, you know, it could go up to 1,000 feet, square foot, whatever. But I wanted to kind of find out, you know, what is average home, let's say 7,500, 7,500 square foot, what was that? You know, what was the example? Anyways, that, you know, 20% of that, and so on. So, you know, was it based on a, this is about 600 square feet is what was needed, and thus, you know, we're throwing this, you know, percentage number on there? Do you know what I'm trying to get to?
Right. And in fact, we would prefer to stay away from discussions of what need is because proposals can vary, let's say, and they are, they are optional. The proposal can, let's say, range from somebody using solar panels to light some exterior, to supply power to some exterior lights versus solar panels to heat up a pool versus solar panels to provide the entire power, power, energy requirement for the, for the entire house, or an industrial building or a commercial building. And that can vary. The technology can change in the future whereby a reduced panel area, for instance, can provide the same amount of power. So all that can, can vary. We are trying to focus the discussion on the concept.
Well, you know, I guess we'll have to kind of assume the maximum usage, so, you know, you need to allow maximum allowance, you know, and make the provision for that. I guess that's why, if, let's say, the house is such that they cannot put solar panels as, you know, anywhere else, but then, you know, needs this additional square footage allowance for them to, to put the solar panels on there. And if we do not know what that is, really, what does 10%, 20%, you know, I don't know what those numbers are for. So thus, what is option A and what does option, option two A and two B does? You know, so that's, that's, I guess, the difficulty I'm, I'm running into when you're proposing two A and two B.
We also think that the current code has enough flexibility built into it, and that's why I mentioned the number of permits that have been issued without Planning Division's review. They are issued over the counter, and there's already enough flexibility for those permits to have been issued without planning review.
Mr. Ogani.
I think, Commissioner Lee, you're raising a very good point, and I think it's really worth the discussion. Based on what, the question that you're asking, perhaps we, we probably shouldn't focus so much on percentage. And, because if the purpose of solar panels is to promote renewable energy sources, at that point, quite frankly, as a, from a policy standpoint, it doesn't really matter how much a house wants to produce, even if their intention is to produce enough solar energy to feed the grid, it's a, you know, from a policy standpoint, we could argue that that's a good thing, not a bad thing. Then, maybe the focus of the policy should be on, where do you start putting the solar panels to get the maximum energy? And then, as you want to increase it, what are, you know, what are the criteria to prioritize? Where do you start and where do you keep adding? If, you know, because, quite frankly, I don't even know if we want to say you're allowed maximum or minimums of certain times, because if the idea is to promote solar energy, well, let's promote that.
And I just wanted to add...
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to kind of how this started was, obviously, with Mr. Pierre had come to council and asked for a discussion of this, and I think the council, all of them, wanted to look at flexibility in terms of looking at what standards might be appropriate to keep with respect to zoning, which ones might not be. And so that's, that's, I guess, the task at hand. And so obviously, one way to do it is to have just certain numerical thresholds, some relief in that regard. Another way perhaps is to lessen the, if you're going to have zoning requirements, typically you have to get a variance. Maybe there's an easier process for a particular, certain types of grant, an easier process. That's another way to do it. I think this, for ease of, I agree, I agree a little bit with Mr. Biddeken, that for ease of applicability, it's probably easier to have some numerical numbers. But again, not wedded to it, but it's, it's certainly something to keep in mind. The whole, the whole point, the whole reason we were here is because the council wanted to look at ways to make it easier to put solar on properties, especially, I think, single-family residential properties.
Any other questions, Mr. Sir?
I'd like to, is Mr. Kraus going to speak too?
If you have a question, sure. Otherwise, I can philosophize on the, on the topic, just like, yeah, the reason that you're, we all have difficulty is, as Mr. Ogani pointed out, it's often a challenge working with state requirements because of the legislative history doesn't seem to quite match the wording that they've come up with. And at least from my point of view, had they wanted to exempt solar equipment from all zoning regulations, they could have done it in a more efficient and understandable manner. Although, by the same token, had they only intended to not have these solar equipment installations subject to designer view and discretionary procedures, they also could have done that in a more efficient and understandable manner. So again, it's a challenge working with that. It's not unusual. My experience is, going back to the late 70s, every time the state is involved in modifying things to either take over the field and regulate, they have not done as good a job as they could have, not only with regard to the relationship to local law, but also in their own internal wording. If you look at some of this, for example, the state law seems to be a lot more liberal with regard to installations on buildings than freestanding ones. Why is that? Again, and as we've pointed out on a couple of occasions, a literal interpretation of not applying any zoning rules would lead to some really absurd situations. Not that most people would want to do that, but if you, you just can't believe that the state legislator, legislators really had that in mind. And I think Mr. Garcia's research of the legislative history seems to back that up, that nobody was complaining about zoning rules per se, like the typical ones like height and setback were keeping people from installing solar equipment. It was the things specifically related to the appearance, like keeping it away from the front, the street view or screening it. Those are the things that seem to be really preventing a lot of these installations. And so, that seemed to be what the state had in mind. But the, the actual drafters of the regulations did not do a very good job, just like they didn't do a very good job with affordable housing, certificates of compliance, billboard regulation, and some other things. But that's just my opinion. Again, you can look at the wording, you can look at how it's organized in the state code, their own definitions, often they don't, don't match what the intent seems to be. So, that's why we struggle with these things. And so I think Hassan was trying to set a mood for, well, maybe you'd want to look at it in terms of a policy perspective. Again, nobody in the organization from council on down wants to discourage solar equipment. We're all for it. Just abandoning all zoning rules doesn't seem to be what anybody had in mind. So again, where do we go from here? Do we just throw up our hands and say, well, we can't do anything about it? I mean, we've had these philosophical discussions, and, and at some point, some of us would just prefer that we do absolutely nothing in terms of changing the law because the state law is what it is. So it's in effect right now, and we've been trying to interpret it the best we can. The numbers that Chris just gave you show you that we're not exactly holding people up, to our knowledge, from installing solar equipment based on the way things are running right now. So if we, if we choose option one, which isn't what I think anybody's recommending, which is that we say no zoning rules apply, we're, we could be shooting ourselves in the foot. So, we think we're being, certainly operating in the spirit of the state law right now with, with what we're doing. And we have been ever since we were made aware of these changes, and we abandoned our practice of having this solar equipment application process that we used to have. We stopped using it, and then we took it out of the code. So, and it's only the, only the really unusual installations that are going to draw attention and make us question whether or not these are really necessary primarily for solar energy installation.
If I may add one more piece of information to this...
Biddeken.
The numbers that I presented, for instance, those, like I mentioned... The numbers that I presented, for instance, those, like I mentioned, the planning division doesn't, hasn't seen them because they are issued by the billing division. The billing division routes unusual installations to the planning division for review. If any one of these proposals, let's say, option A or option B, which provide additional allowances to some zoning standards, if any one of those, let's say, were to be adopted, from my experience, I don't see that the number of permits that have been issued would be higher, because if there were unusual installations or proposals that were coming in for review, the billing division would route them to planning and we would review them. I don't know of any, let's say, that would benefit from the allowances that we're talking about today. The two options that we provided different degrees of allowances. So I don't know exactly what benefit they would have, but conceivably, they would have some benefit, let's say, if somebody has some hardship, maybe there's a, the shadow of a building cast on a property, and then as a result, maybe shifting a particular installation into a certain, a setback area would benefit them probably, but we haven't seen them coming in for discussion purposes.
Wait, you're talking about, you haven't seen solar panels proposed that would take advantage of this exception?
Of the, of the, of the two options, yeah.
But isn't the idea that have, providing these options would incentivize more of those types of things to happen?
Right. We've gone through the zoning code. These are the standards from which allowances, let's say, would reasonably be beneficial. The other zoning standards, we've reviewed them, and we don't recommend any exemptions from those or any allowances. So from this narrow list of standards, I don't see how, based on the permits that we've been, we've been issuing, how a permit that has been turned down would benefit, would have been issued.
Sure. Then why were they proposed? Why were they proposed if they're not going to expand the ability and the ease of making solar more accessible?
Because we've been asked to stretch the limit, and those are the standards that we are.
But why would you not do something that would stretch the limits? If you're saying that none of the applications that you have seen would have been expanded by this, were there other options? I mean, it's interesting to me that what we're looking at is, everything is related to a building envelope issue, as opposed to, you know, solar deals with solar orientation, it deals with shade and shadows. It's all based upon a lot that, who knows what its orientation is, and the building orientation, which is arbitrary and based upon some developer years ago who cared less about prevailing wind and solar. So why is it based this way if it isn't seen as an improvement? Just my question.
Because specifically, the zoning standards address those development standards and not solar orientation, or wind direction, or any of those environmental factors. And in fact, at the October Planning Commission meeting, the option that, the draft ordinance that we provided, proposed complete exemptions from four standards, interior setbacks, height, coverage, and certain aspects of landscaping. So complete exemption, let's say, or a complete allowance from those standards would provide some flexibility, but the planning commission's direction was to limit the allowances. So we went back and looked at limiting those allowances, and we provided two possible limits for discussion purposes. And those limits can be stretched, but they were provided for discussion purposes. So complete exemption was on the table, but not recommended.
I think that was prior to reading the letter from the Attorney General, and we now had opportunity to read the interpretation or the explanation from Attorney General on these cases. And there, you know, even though it's not fully described, but it's, they're pretty explicit in what they're trying to say as far as, you know, the intent of the state law. And that, you know, I think normally we, you know, imply zoning requirements and all these things to have uniform, you know, uniformity of the neighbors, of the build-out, or the, you know, have any type of a development that is a, you know, controlled, you know, controlled, set in control environment. But what they're saying is that that type of aesthetics or any type of design issues that arises from those things are not really to be considered, and, you know, that will prohibit from installing the solar equipment, is how I'm reading this thing here now. So actually, any type of, you know, restrictions that we actually try to, you know, impose is, according to the letter, were actually, you know, violating the state law. Am I correct?
I disagree personally. I think that if you read the general government code, that there's a lot of flexibility in it. It deals with the fact that zoning code deals with a larger issue than just, it says reasonable, unreasonably restricted, so there's also a reasonable restriction if there's an unreasonable restriction. There's also, it states that applicable health and safety standards and requirements imposed by state and local permitting authorities. So there, I think there's a broader interpretation instead of a narrower interpretation, so I don't disagree with that. I think that as planning commissioners, one of the issues that we have to look at here is the application of both utility and, and planning requirements, and how do you balance those two and meet both of those intents? I think that's what's trying to be done here. So I think that the instance that Mr. Garcia said is that if you, this hasn't been challenged in court, but there are other cities and states that have taken a stronger position than one of just complete allowance, and they've balanced both what the city is. I'm sure Carmel and other cities would say, you know, there has to be a balance between what are the building standards and how do you make utilities work here? We don't want a transformer in the middle of somebody's front yard. It has to have access to other issues, but other utilities have those same restrictions that deal with how they fit within a community. So I don't see it as being all or nothing. I do see there being that, that area, and that's what we're here to look at. So I do respectfully disagree with that interpretation.
Okay, I agree. You don't have to convince me.
Any further questions for Stan?
Seeing none, I think we can move forward with the public. Mr. Peer is the only person speaking, which is not a surprise. Thank you for being patient, sir. There's another one. You're going to speak twice, or? Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I, you know, it's just us, take as much time as you need, but I mean, we try to limit it as much as possible, at least approximately fifteen minutes. Let's see what happens with the time.
Great, thanks, appreciate that.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, I'm Scott Peer, and thank you for listening. You might say I'm the instigator for this agenda item. In 2007, I selected an architect and a solar contractor to design my solar system. In October 2008, GWP approved the plans, but planning rejected our permit application and claimed that I needed to apply for a variance. To this day, the city continues to claim that I need a variance to build my solar system. City received a letter from California Deputy Attorney General Deborah Sloan on February 9th of this year. Letter states that the city is not complying with the law. Letter states that option one presented to planning, to the planning commission on October 21st, 2009, would correct the problem by removing all zoning restrictions on solar energy systems. It also states that option two is in direct conflict with the law. Letter states that all of the arguments used by the city to support their position lack merit. Letter urges the city to correct its noncompliance with the Solar Rights Act, which was written in 1978, and has been amended a few times since. The city attorney's office has spent the last year and a half showing their contempt for the Solar Rights Act, trotting out lame rationalizations for breaking the law. The city attorney's office has also shown their broader contempt for the law in general by failing to respond to my Public Records Act request for information concerning other solar system applications, which my attorney sent in order to ascertain how many others have been denied their right to install solar systems. Even tonight, Mr. Garcia claimed that there have been no court cases, but there was a recent court case in San Diego County. In that case, a property owner won against a municipality. He won a monetary judgment. Because the city attorney's office has continually shown their contempt for several laws, their inputs regarding solar energy should be ignored. The California Attorney General's office is the authority on state law, and their written opinion is that the Glendale city attorney is wrong, the city is violating the law. Report prepared by planning and the city attorney for this meeting discusses interpretations of the law by other communities that apply zoning to solar systems. This is irrelevant. The fact that other communities are also in violation of the law does not lessen Glendale's duty to comply with the law. Everyone knows that the Attorney General's office is understaffed in enforcement, they just don't have the staff to run around and enforce all these individual cases. The planning report also makes the argument that zoning includes health and safety considerations, even though the deputy attorney general addressed this and dismissed this tired argument in the February 9th letter. The specific cases called out by the city attorney, sightlines for pedestrians and traffic, and spread of fire rarely apply to solar systems. My solar system is far above sightlines, and it uses only non-flammable materials, including metal, silicon, and glass. In any case, the review must be for health and safety only, and the variance process is not needed for that. The planning report makes modifications to the previous option two, which make it further from complying with the law rather than closer. There's no point in approving either option two A or two B. Neither would provide any substantive improvement for solar system applicants, either myself or others. Option two and all its variants are illegal and unacceptable. If you want solar energy, what Glendale is doing now is not working. According to Suzanne Daniels in GWP, Glendale has about 140 solar systems installed. In other words, there are over 1,000 residents for each solar system. These solar systems are designed to provide adequate power typically for two or three people. So right now, we're somewhere around the one-tenth of one percent solar generation in our city on residential solar systems. So you have a choice. You can join the dinosaurs who pretend that our current fossil fuel energy system should never change, or you can show leadership, and you can recognize that we should accelerate the conversion to clean, efficient energy that began in the 1970s. There's nothing to fear in solar energy. It's popular for good reason, and it's widely used elsewhere. Glendale does not need to fight against it anymore. We could be like the city of Berkeley. I talked to Neil Desner in the City of Berkeley Office of Energy and Sustainable Development. He told me Berkeley stopped applying zoning to solar system years ago due to the state law. Their website states, quote, "Solar projects do not require zoning permits or design review." In parentheses, "California State Code, Section 65850.5," end quote. He was matter-of-fact about it. He said, "That's the law." Since February 2007, their residents have installed 745 solar systems. Their population is 102,000, about half of Glendale's, so their per capita rate is over eight times Glendale's rate. The city was incorporated in 1878, and they have many old homes that don't comply with the current setback. A lot of solar systems don't comply with zoning rules, although they don't track how many. They do get a few complaints about the solar systems. I was surprised by that. He said essentially, they shrug them off. It's the state law. They call in to complain, they say, "Too bad, state law. Talk to your legislator about it." According to the Glendale planning report for the March 24, 2009 city council meeting, Pasadena also does not apply zoning to solar systems. You've probably been to Pasadena. I mean, I've been to Pasadena. I don't see any problem with solar systems popping up that are ugly, in the way, blocking sightlines, doing any of the things that we're, you know, claiming that we have this big fear that is going to do to the city. I mean, Pasadena's a nice city. I don't see any problem with being like that either. So Glendale could comply with the law, stop blocking solar systems for zoning rules. The result would be more solar systems installed, less pollution, and a few complaints that are easily dismissed. All that needs to be done is for the city to follow the recommendation of state deputy attorney general. Please vote for option one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peer. Any questions for Mr.?
Yeah, I have a question.
Scott.
How would, you currently have a solar system?
No, I don't have it yet. I have a design for a solar system, and I have GWP approval for that system.
Okay, and then?
I've had that for a year and a half now, yeah.
So, and then what, how is your solar system done in a way where these options, option one A and one B, would not allow you to have the solar system you want?
Two A or two B?
Yeah.
The, the ones where they have limited?
Yeah, the twenty percent exemption.
Yeah.
What does your solar, what do you want by?
I have, the issues with zoning were the street setback and the height. Now, my garage, the whole neighborhood that I live in was built in the 1940s, before any of that zoning was written. So all the garages, if you go down the street, or the majority of the garages are built, you know, maybe five feet from the street. That's pretty typical. Just the whole line of them, right up the street, actually, the whole area in Adams Hill where I live, you'll find one garage after another that doesn't comply with the setback. So even if you doubled the setback, it actually wouldn't help us.
So the budding, the garage is abutting the property line, right?
Yeah, it's a hilly area, so they built the garages for efficiency, you know, basically close to the street, because you don't have to dig into the hill or support up as much. So, so that was an efficient way to design, you know, garages, just put them close to the street, and that was what they did in, you know, 40s, 20s, you know, all the, before the code. I don't know when the new code came in, it might have been 70s or something, but.
So you're trying to build on top of that garage?
Yeah, yeah, so I wanted to put the solar system on top of the garage. It's the garage, it's an uphill lot, so it's built into the hill, and then you go upstairs on the side of it, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring the picture up, because we have this, you know, nice three-dimensional drawing of it, but, and then on top is a patio, which has been there more than 20 years. Actually, you can tell it's original because I bought the house 20 years ago, but you can tell it was an original patio, because if you look at the beams underneath, they're, they're big, thick beams, they don't even make beams like that anymore, and also you can tell that, you know, they're, it's not fresh lumber by any means, it's, you know, 40s vintage construction, clearly, you know, with poured concrete and big, heavy beams. And so it was built as a patio on top and, on top of the garage.
And how much higher would the solar panel be if you build it?
So the solar panels would be eight feet up, so we didn't want to destroy our patio. So, well, actually, the two reasons, not only do we not want to destroy our patio by, you know, putting it right on the roof, I mean, we've had this patio for 20 years, I don't want to give it up. Also, the neighbor's garage is built literally on the property line, and the street goes up, and so it actually overhangs our garage. It's about eight feet higher, maybe nine feet higher. So if we raise it up eight feet, we can get the system into the sun. If you're down in good part of the day, good part of the year, the solar system would actually be in the shade from the neighbor's garage.
And do you have solar studies that support that?
Yeah, I have a whole.
And do you have a licensed, I'm sorry, do you have a licensed individual who did this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a, not only, it was a licensed architect who designed the system, it was engineered by a structural engineer, you know, to get all the beam, you know, right?
I'm more concerned about solar orientation.
Yeah, yeah, there was the A&amp;M Solar Energy, which is now Martifor in Santa Monica.
And is there no other place on your property that this solar array could go that would be appropriate?
I actually, before I designed this system, I got a quote for a rooftop system, and it was less expensive to put it on the roof. The reason I didn't go with that, first of all, is that it was just going to be ugly, because the, the way my roof is set up is a bunch of small, you know, pieces, and so you could put this big, flat rectangular thing on a bunch, on top of a bunch of trapezoidal, you know, roof areas, and it would, you know, it would look quite ugly. The efficiency would probably be okay.
But we can't judge aesthetics, so I don't think we can talk about aesthetics here, because that's not part of solar.
Yeah, the other thing I don't like is that, one, one issue with rooftop systems is that they do leak. I have a friend who had major damage in his home, because you drill, you know, what, 20 or 30 big holes in your roof, you, you put that system in, the system is going to last for 30 years. So any, you know, you've got a long time for all those holes through your roof, you know, to start leaking, and, and that's one of the big problems with rooftop systems is that they leak, you know.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Just piggybacking on you.
So you're basically saying, if you had zero setback requirement, then your solar system? system would work on that parking structure? I mean, in your garage?
Yeah, yeah. So, if they got rid of the zoning, you know, the height and the setback, then my system could be approved, although they were also making the argument about primary purpose, you know, saying, "Well, it provides shade for the patio, so what's the primary purpose?" I mean, to me, I go, "Well, if I'm going to spend $30,000 on this thing, you know, that costs us a lot more than if I was just putting up, you know, like down the street they put a patio cover on their thing." I'm pretty sure they didn't spend anywhere near $30,000 to put up a patio cover on their garage, you know.
Now, with this, if, I mean, if option 2A, 2B went into effect, if you don't want to put it on your roof, on your house, you could have it in your backyard as another method. Is that will work in your case?
Well, no. In my case, there are trees and a hill back there, so really, the only places that actually get reliable sun are my roof and the garage. It's a fairly steep lot, so they're basically two places that have any reliable sun.
Go ahead, Mr. Lee. Just, it's not a question to you. It's more of, I guess, Mr. Pierre's, I guess, case is unique in that all that, I guess, Adams Hill area, as he mentioned, all the houses with the garages all, you know, in the front, putting up against the street. And this was prior to, it's all neighborhoods prior to our establishment of zoning code. Now, obviously, strict interpretation of our code and all that prohibits him from doing anything, really. Now, yet, you know, we are hesitant to really go with the state law, you know, with option one because it really then, we are, we have no control over where these things pop up, you know, in the corner of Front 9 somewhere, or, you know, and it may, they may have all kinds of reasons. And that's, I guess, one of the reasons why we're here, still talking about this thing. Now, what happens if the structures that's been there all these years, can you not grandfather clause those structures in there so that, you know, they are exempt, you know, from this zoning code when they want to put up a, you know, because the structure was there before?
Is that a question for us?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair, would you like?
One moment. Do we have any further questions for Mr. Pierre? I'd like to continue that, finish that, and then...
Mr. Yussain and I were not here for the October one. That's why I think we have so many questions. Thank you for letting me piggyback on yours. So, the reason that your solar installation is -- part of the reason that we are reviewing this is it's in noncompliance with -- if you had it straight on the roof, it would be legal?
That was the interesting claim, was that when I talked to, I guess it was Chris Baxter in Planning, he made a suggestion that if I did exactly the same thing, but had the solar panels, you know, basically on the roof of the garage, that they would approve it. Now, the actual fact is, the only difference between those two systems, you need the same crossbeams and the same support. So, the only actual difference between that system and the one I proposed is about seven feet of vertical member because, you know, they're typically raised, what, 18 inches? So, they have all that structure. So, basically, what, you know, what I did is add a...
And your answer is yes?
Yeah.
Thank you. That was the answer.
Okay.
I was looking for yes or no.
Go ahead, if you have more questions.
I just have one more question. So, your interest is, so in essence, by raising it seven feet, you do change the height and the height limits that are based upon pre-existing zoning approvals. And so, this is an alteration of an existing building. And you're saying that your neighbor's garage is eight feet higher. Is it in the solar area? Would it really affect it? I mean, those are the things that we don't know because we haven't seen it, but I'm just very curious because it sounds to me, by looking at this, is that unreasonable and reasonable are the determinants here in the general code? And telling you that it can't go seven feet seems to me to be not unreasonable. So, those are the questions I have. You feel it's unreasonable because you feel that you should have the existing use of the patio? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
I would lose the use of my patio.
Okay.
Go ahead. I just have one question for you, just to point of clarity. You have all the designs and the structural information. Was there any consideration for wind impact on the solar panels at that height? Was that included in your parameters?
Yeah, yeah. It's calculated for 100 miles an hour. Yeah, I definitely, you know, wanted to make sure of that because we're on a hill. We can get Santa Ana winds there, so...
Commissioner Yussain.
What would be the total height with the solar panels installed of your structure?
Let's see. I think it's, the garage is probably about 10 feet, and then another eight to the bottom, and then another couple above. So, yeah, exactly, but it's 20, 20, low 20s, I think. So, they said, I forget what the numbers are, what the allowance was. Oh, it looks like they're finding the photo. Actually, that's my property, yeah.
How tall, how high does your house go?
The house, actually, you can see in the left corner, that's the house up above. So, you can see it's a pretty steep lot. So, the patio level is actually below the main floor.
Oh, is that the patio?
That's the neighbor's.
Oh.
That's the garage right there. So, we go on top of that, and you're looking up a little bit. So, it appears, yeah, actually, that angle gives you a good view of the patio levels about even with the basement, actually.
Thanks so much, Moore. I was picturing something totally...
That is. That's a neighbor. Yeah, there we go.
Your solar panel is going to be abutting that other, your neighbor's property. He can slide down that slide.
Yeah, actually, the way the property lines are, that garage is literally built on the property line. I don't know how they got away with that. And mine is about, I don't know, four feet maybe from the property line. So, I'm sit back, and so I own, you know, a little section of bushes in between them. And so, being so close, and you can see it's pretty far above, it throws a lot of shade, actually, on the...
Can we get the other shot?
Can we see some of the others? I agree.
No, the other?
That one.
Yeah. Can you blow that up?
All right.
Well, let's go back to...
Okay. So, that's the roof. So, that's the odd shape, the roof you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. It's hard to tell on that, on that angle, although you can sort of, you can sort of guess away. Yeah. And really, the front side leans towards the, this is, that's sort of the north face in the front, so it really kind of needs to go around, around in the back. Or, no, sorry, that's, yeah, it's sort of north and west.
It's not the same shape as the other roof, right? The one next to it?
No, no. That's a much later house next door. That's like a 70s, I think, maybe vintage.
It is a pitch.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, right.
And it has maybe eight different surfaces, you know, with, you know, the angles going. It's kind of like a tetrahedron with a couple things where the doors come in and the rooms kind of go in the back, so it's not quite a square either, you know.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Pierre? Okay, we're done.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hargani, before we, lest we forget the question...
Wolfgang will answer the question.
Yes, Chairman Protam Sheets, members of the commission. I just want to correct something that might answer the question. That garage, and most of the garages in the neighborhood, were not built prior to the zoning rules regulating them. We would have had, we would have, the city would have had a 25-foot street front setback at the time of construction, which is actually greater than it is today. So, this project has a setback variance, as do almost all of the garages and houses that are closer than 25 feet or 15 feet if they're built more recently. Yeah. This isn't like dealing with a legal nonconforming situation, so all your rules aren't set up for dealing with variances. This is the exception, not the rule. You know, so the whole garage got a variance, so in some ways, is it justifiable to require another variance to modify that? So...
Slippery slope.
Yeah. Again, we don't, the code isn't set up to deal with things that the code doesn't permit, and the code still doesn't permit this today. So, today, this would have a, the buildings have a 15-foot setback and that 25, and you have a driveway length. So, if you had a direct-entry garage like that, the garage door would actually have to be 18 feet back of the property line. This is probably maybe a foot back of the property line. It's probably like a three-foot curved property line distance.
So, just to promote the solar equipment installation, if the properties have, you know, variances that's been already approved, you know, why not allow them to build on that instead of, you know, requiring them, you know, I know that any type of modification, any type of improvement on the structure will, you know, trigger the, another variance or, you know, need for them to come back here.
Conformance.
Yeah, out of conformance. But what happens if you write, you know, allow the already-approved variances in the case of the solar equipment to, you know, to actually modify or put the solar panels on top of that?
Yeah, you could always write a zoning regulation almost any way you wanted. It would just be more complicated. You'd have to say, you can put solar equipment in a street set front or street-side setback area in these situations. And then, you know, again, then you would have to allow them, period, because you have setback variances granted for different types of buildings and structures. So, could you put it on top of a garden wall that was approved by setback variance? Or would you have to mention specifically garages or garages or houses? You have to, it's not that it can't be done. It just becomes so complicated to deal with all the exceptions once you enter into that realm. And the law becomes so complicated dealing with a few situations.
If I may.
Careful when we do that.
You know, I couldn't agree with Mr. Kraus more. And then, I think the question takes us back to one of the ideas that Mr. Garcia initially mentioned that I'm afraid we never discussed with Mr. Kraus and Mr. Bagdikian before. But this came up in, between me and Mr. Garcia, that if the purpose is to find a simpler way to allow solar panels for those properties which are exception and not the rule, we can shift our focus from trying to stretch the principle behind the way that we actually implement our zoning code today. We shift our gaze from that to, well, let's find a simpler way to process the exceptions because we, quite frankly, we think Mr. Pierre has a very good case for a variance. However, I think he's principally thinking that, no, it goes against the principle, and we respect him for that. We really, really respect his viewpoint on that issue. And then, if that's the Planning Commission's direction, that you would like us to replace the variance process, for which we really think there's a good case, with an administrative process that addresses the exception, makes it a lot simpler, but without stretching our principle of separating the different reasons why we think a structure is different than the solar panel, we think that's a good separation. And we could stick with that and say, in this case, perhaps because of the property and the specific limitations of the property, we could come up with an administrative process that can be done over the counter.
Wow. I just, I, when you're getting, before you start your deliberation, I just wanted to add some other points.
We have one more speaker, so you want to do that?
Yeah, near the end.
Okay. We do have one more request from the speaker. This is Lynn Theard. Just give us your name and share the comments.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Theard, and thanks for allowing me to speak. That's my husband. That's our solar system. And he addressed a lot of the things I wanted to address, and actually, so did you when you asked a lot of the questions you asked. So, I'm just going to speak to a couple of things. First of all, there was some question about putting the panels directly on top of our garage. And while we would use, lose the use of the patio, I also have other concerns about that. It could become a hazard. I'd have to completely block off all access to that rooftop and make sure that nobody could get onto it. And then, of course, we have animals. I have children who visit, so there's a health and safety issue for me putting it directly on top of the garage like that. Concerning a rooftop installation, you saw what our home looks like, and it's a small home. And in addition to the concerns my husband mentioned about, you know, the integrity of the roof standing up to the installation of the panels, we have a lot of venting on top of there. So, we've got, you know, the usual venting that is required in most homes, and we would have a great deal of difficulty arranging the panels, taking into consideration that, the odd shape of the roof, and also the most appropriate sun angles. And the part that would probably be most, where it would be most easily, the panels would be most easily with install would be the most, would be the most inappropriate place, which is the north side, because that's where our roof is the flattest and has the least amount of ventilation. The side that has the best angles, of course, is the angle that's most problematic. So, that was another concern. And also, I wanted to let you know, my husband didn't mention this, but the architect that we chose to design this is a lead-certified architect and had experience in creating solar systems. She had done one at the Pasadena Humane Society, and we selected her for that reason. So, we really went out of our way to find people who knew what we wanted to do and understood what we were trying to do. And working in concert with her and the solar installer was how we came, we came to the conclusions of where the most advantageous place would be to put our panels. Now, there's one other thing, too, that gets banned. I've heard a lot bandied about a great deal tonight and over the past year and a half as we brought this up at the city council and other planning meetings. And that is the concern about the lack of, the idea of prohibiting any zoning regulations on this. And one of the things that I read when I have read this code, the state law, is that in addition to its ambiguity about the constraints, there is one part where it is not ambiguous, and that is that it states quite clearly that the primary purpose of the proposed structure has to be for solar energy. And I was intrigued when I heard Mr. Bagdikian say that generally, the zoning review only comes up when there is a new structure involved. Our garage was, is an existing structure, so we were proposing to put it on an existing structure. We were not trying to build a house or build an extra floor or trying to do something else. And as my husband mentioned, we have umbrellas. We have those lovely little pop-up canopies that, you know, you can take out and put on as you need to, and they're far less expensive. I can buy a new canopy every year for the next 200 years with what this system will cost us. So, the primary purpose of this has always been for us, solar energy. It's not about building a shade structure. We already have shade. And if we want shade, we can get it so many other ways legally and much less expensively. And I even saw a quote from Mr. Garcia in the Glendale News Press about us wanting to have a shade structure, and I just, I'm just baffled. I don't know, I understand that there are people who try to do this, but that's not my point. So, I am, and I also feel somewhat impugned by that. You know, we did not do this to get an illegal shade structure. We did this for solar energy. So, that's all I have to say, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Chairman Protam Sheets. Just, I wanted to just briefly respond to a couple of comments, and I think some of this probably goes without saying, but obviously, our office, we don't really have a horse in this race, so to speak. We're here as advisors to you and to the city council. Certainly, I certainly don't have any contempt for the Solar Rights Act. In fact, my job, my life will probably be a lot easier if the council were to just exempt all solar energy systems from zoning. I really wouldn't have to worry about any legal challenges or any legal issues with that if they just did that. So, actually, you know, that's not our role here. The council obviously expressed some concerns about completely exempting zoning, completely exempting solar energy systems from zoning. So, they've asked us to look at what are the legal limits of our authority here, and that's what I'm trying to do. The Attorney General certainly has put an opinion in, like I said, that there are some valid points in there. I don't think it's totally reasonable what they said. I just said there may be competing views. I can certainly say that the Attorney General is not the ultimate authority on interpreting California law. That role is left to the courts. I don't think it's totally reasonable what they said. I just said there may be competing views. I could certainly say that the Attorney General is not the ultimate authority on interpreting California law. That role is left to the courts. And obviously, the Attorney General has a role there, but that's... The ultimate authority is the courts, not the AG. And last, I would say, I think Glendale, the city as a whole, has a pretty strong record supporting solar energy. It's been a lot to promote that. And the council has expressed this many times, and this is not any opposition that I can sense that the city has to solar energy. Those are the issues that I wanted to address. Respect to the comments that remain. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff?
Yes.
Sign.
Okay, I may have missed this earlier, but I'm trying to get the justification for the exemption we have right now, which isn't for aesthetic reasons and which isn't for health and safety reasons. How do we justify the exact 10% and 20%? I know this was touched on earlier. Can you clarify how we get to that point?
Is that... I'm sorry. Is that a legal question? Is that a planning... Are you asking how the planning come up with this?
I just need... I want... I'm trying to understand the justification. I know it's not for aesthetic... It's a way to try to help this and have some exemptions.
Again, we're looking at zoning as... We're looking at the viewpoint that zoning is not only related to aesthetics. And so the question is, are there certain zoning standards that you can grant some relief from? Either through providing some relief on terms of the actual numbers or some other way? And I think that's what planning staff has come to, is that these are some deviations that you can allow in your code if someone could put these without complying 100% with the setback requirement, that sort of thing. So it was not... It's not based... The whole zoning code, in our opinion, is not based solely on aesthetics. There are other considerations, including health and safety.
That's what I mean. Because it's not based on just those things. The justification for this is for to have some exemption available. This is what was seen as an ideal exemption.
The idea was certainly to make it easier to put solar. And it's obviously the commission's role to say whether or not you agree with that.
And to add that, it's a planning convention sometimes that when you're... Especially when you have a built-out city as old as ours, that you come up with some level of flexibility. Usually, 10%, 20%, and 30% are the three levels that people think about in terms of relief of the zoning regulations from time to time. And based on the actual standards that you're looking at, that could change. So it's really a planning convention at some level.
And then, is it... So I just want to get an idea of what other cities have also done. Like, for example, Pasadena's name was brought up. Is it totally exempted from there or not?
Chris has surveyed them, and I can tell you that. Go ahead.
My recollection is Pasadena does. I can't remember specifically. But, and there are a couple of other cities, like Santa Monica does not exempt them from zoning. They, again, they kind of took the approach of 2A or 2B, but in a different fashion. But again, they do take the view that you can apply zoning standards like height and setback, and they provided some additional deviations from that. I think Irvine, a couple of cities up north. We didn't do a real formal survey, but we just looked at... As we started looking at city attorney and the planning department listservs, we came up with a number of cities that were doing that.
At Santa Monica, just to add a... Santa Monica actually adds design review, which seems to be...
Contrary to...
Contrary to the clear intent. So when you reach a certain threshold or... Several months ago, I listened to about 80% of a planning commission hearing related to that, and they went through some of the same discussions. But again, how they ended up with applying design review, I don't know how they ever justified that at some point. So, again, you had a limited number of people. You know, one party's saying, well, you can't do that. That's the main concern. There seemed to be the height. Well, you need to let us go higher, especially on the... I think the commercial building is maybe the taller multifamily. So, you know, our ordinance actually does that. And I think Chris's figures will show that, yeah, in most installations, you should be able to accommodate some reasonable solar installation with a little extra flexibility. And get back to an earlier question. I'm sorry. We arrived at these sort of by process of elimination. There are only so many zoning standards that apply. When you start eliminating the ones that just don't relate to this at all or would lead to absurd conclusions like throwing away parking or driveway standards, you end up with what you end up with. Again, whether or not you exempt solar installations entirely from interior setback requirements or height, or whether you add a 10% or 20% allowance, I mean, that depends on how much flexibility you think we need. Again, these additional allowances weren't designed to accommodate the entire solar array or water heating installation, whatever, in that incremental area. I think the staff report is pretty clear on that. It just provides a little extra room. Doesn't mean that in that additional area, you're going to be able to accommodate everything in just a few inches in interior setback. That was never the idea. Commissioner Lee.
If you were looking at these options, and Mr. Higani just mentioned that you look at increments of 10%, 20%, 30%. If you want to allow flexibility to promote installation of these solar panels, have you reviewed... Have you looked at 30%? Is there a problem with the 3%? Was it eliminated from this option?
Well, as Chris mentioned, we had total elimination of some of these things. And the planning commission didn't like that the last time we talked about it. So, no, there's nothing wrong with 30% either. It's just a little extra when it comes to interior setback. Talking about height, now it starts to get a little taller. Interior setback, not much difference. But you do get closer. You could always put a limit on, you know, 30%, but no closer than X number of feet to a property line or inches to a property line. So, but again, I think, Chris, you've done enough to think that at least 20... I don't know, about 10%, 20% should help somebody. Again, we have no objection... I don't think we have any objection to changing it to 30%.
I think all your... Just when you, I think, said that again, said that 10%, 20%, nobody took advantage of, and really, you stated that it didn't seem like it was enough to help anybody anyways.
Well, again, we assume that based on what people do. Most of the time, these installations are on residential projects. Most residential projects that they're added to are single-family houses. Most single-family houses are not at the height limit. Most single-family house solar installations are on the roof. So most of the time, these numbers don't come up. They don't need this relief. That's why I think Chris said what he said, is it's not going to provide significant relief. It's going to provide relief in those cases where people are at the limit.
And in fact, this is also to answer Commissioner Yassine's question regarding the practice at other municipalities. Earlier, I did some research. I called some planning departments and talked to their planners of some of the neighboring cities regarding their practices. And I asked the question whether they would exempt a solar installation from zoning regulations. They said yes. But then, when I probed it a little further, I asked the question whether they would exempt a new structure that's being built that doesn't comply with zoning regulations, like in terms of, I give examples, setback or height or some other zoning standard to support solar panels. If they would exempt that whole assembly from zoning regulations, they didn't have an answer. So typically, planners are faced with normal installations, which is on a structure that's already built. And the panels are just bracketed or supported on those structures. And those are normal installations. And those are exempt from zoning. And they're not reviewed in terms of zoning regulations. So none of those municipalities that I contacted had any... Had exposure to what we are facing today.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Mr. Higani, you mentioned that it had not been brought up, but it could be reconsidered and brought back to us, that there would be an administrative process to review non-conforming sites. And that it could be based upon solar orientation and other instances that could substantiate, you know, adding to a non-conforming situation.
Right.
If we chose to go that way and ask that you all bring that back to us, would we continue this? Would that be the appropriate?
I would think so, because I would need to have that discussion with Mr. Kraus and Mr. Bagdikian about how... What the best procedure would be. And then, we could propose something with you with certain findings that we could do akin to a zoning clearance. If these conditions exist, we could sign off on them.
Because to me, I think that we need to have the zoning code not compromised and the solar code not compromised. And I think that there are situations where, if we look at it... And I think we have direction in the... At least the California government code portion. So I would like to... For us to consider that I can make a motion of such... Of it, or if you'd like me to, to discuss it. Or we haven't closed the public hearing or anything yet.
Not yet.
But I'd like to maybe consider us going in that direction.
I'd support it if we add a little bit more flexibility to the, I guess, option 2A, 2B. You know, for them to review 30%, you know, to give us a little more flexibility.
Allow there to be other... Some options other than that, based on the administrative...
2B with some of the... With an administrative section. But option B, if it's a 10-foot-high garage and it's 30%, it's only three more feet, that's, you know, big enough for a dog and a rat and a kid to get under it. So I understand that, you know, the reality of it is... It's not significant change.
We're going to give flexibility, you know.
I think that it works. You're right.
Why not give flexibility, really? But what is giving 10%? What does that do? 10%, 20%? Anyways, if we're going to play with the numbers, I guess...
But between 20 and 30, they seem pretty significant.
Yeah.
So do you want to...
I mean, between 20 and 10.
Well, if I may, I think what I'm hearing, at least in the two different alternatives that are being suggested, you're... They could both be put under the ideas of administrative review, whether that would be through a process of exemptions or sign-offs, or whether it would be through a percentage or any other idea. I don't hear that any of you is close to the idea outside these two options if we can come up with another administrative process that might work. So if that's your intention, then we could follow that particular direction.
Quick question. I need to hear more details about this to understand it. But would this be something that is done on an as-needed basis? Or would it be something... It seems to me that no matter which way we go, we're almost going to live with the fact that every time there's an unusual installation that doesn't go across the counter, we're going to have to do something like this. And this... It almost feels intuitively to me that this will be the answer for this case. And this may not be the answer for the next case or any case after that. But to me, it seems to have more merit than what we're looking at. So just a point of clarity that if...
I think that's a very good question. I think what you're raising is that we shouldn't come up with an administrative process that only addresses this particular case because we happen to understand it and we happen to empathize with Mr. Pierre. And I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, but Mr. and Mrs. Pierre for the lack of knowing the last name. But that's well taken. I think the principle that we're going to follow is that we're going to stick with our current interpretation of where we draw the line. However, we do understand that there are certain properties that do not meet the normal conventions of the properties that we deal with. And for those, we can come up with a broader approach to deal with those, similar to what we do, for example, for parking reduction permits. That there are a few findings that we can make that are broad enough that can address a variety of different unusual properties. We will look at them that way.
Just one thing to keep in mind. We have to make sure it's not discretionary. It has to be ministerial. Otherwise, again, we're flying in... Clearly, in the face of state law. So we're going to have to have criteria to compare it to. If it meets these 2, 3, 4, 5 criteria, we're going to have to approve it. It can't be a judgment call. Whatever... That's why the challenge is to try and come up with something like that, to fit at least... Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, I just wanted to add. I think you definitely want to have criteria, standards, to govern this process. But I think to the extent of what you're saying is, we're going to treat the standards as ministerial. And if you can comply with them, then fine. You don't need any sort of exception. But if you want some exception, you go through this other process. I don't think that necessarily violates the provision which says non-discretionary permits, because you're really saying, if you can build within our zoning or whichever zoning we think is applicable, you're going to get a building permit, then you've satisfied that particular prong of the state law, which says you have to have a non-discretionary permit process. It's just like what we're going through now. It's, you know, for example, Mr. Pierre, he can either comply with the zoning or he can apply... He could apply for a variance. It's not... That doesn't mean we're requiring him to apply for a variance. The variance is a constitutional safety valves because there might be particular unique circumstances for his property. What the state law is saying, you can't require a design review of CUP to have the right to do it in the first place, regardless of whether or not you comply with zoning. So I think there's a distinction there. So I think we should... That's the direction that the two months ago. I think it's supportable by state law.
So administrative would be the planning staff?
Right. Much in the way that Mr. Kraus explained, that if certain criteria are met, we will just approve them.
My question... Or not... My point would be... My request would be that this is done in the most expeditious fashion, if that's possible. And we have a dilemma here. We have a bureaucracy telling another bureaucracy to do something quicker. I don't know if that's an oxymoron, but I know it makes your job extremely difficult.
Glendale's not a bureaucracy.
I know, yeah.
We are a responsive agency.
I know I made a statement that didn't need to be made, but I just wanted, for the audience here, for Mr. Pierre and his family, it's... They all know it's gone a long way. And I sure hope that you don't feel that this has been done intentionally. It's more a broad-view look as opposed to an individual-focused look about what your needs are. And I think we've all accepted your intent. But there are consequences that we at least need to consider from this commission's standpoint and the staff's standpoint that we hopefully will be understood. So as far as I'm concerned, if Commissioner Landrigan thinks she can...
Can I write it all up?
Closing the public hearing. Is there further deliberation on this?
Yeah, I think what you're asking... You're going to ask the staff to come back and bring back some information.
Okay.
So that you don't have to renotice. It probably makes sense to leave it when you complete your deliberations on giving staff direction that you reopen the hearing and then continue it so that it doesn't need to be...
So the motion that I am going to propose is that staff further research the option that we discussed and bring it back in relationship to the... Preferably, option B, which is more generous than option A. That's what I'm going to propose. And that... Then we open it up to continue it? Is that how we'll do it?
So if he's done without further notice?
All right.
Technically, I don't think you really need him.
Review process.
Right.
Doesn't need to be a motion.
So I would... I'm going to request that staff bring us information and revise option B so that it can include an administrative process for non-conforming sites based upon the discussion we've had today. And...
Go ahead, sorry.
Apology accepted. And that it come back to us for further consideration. Anyone else want to add anything to that?
Well, as I mentioned, you know, if we want to be more flexible, why not give more flexibility? So even review, you know, what the 30% will do if that hasn't been done.
I'm totally open to moving it up to 30% to have more flexibility. But if... I'm totally open to moving it up to 30% to have more flexibility. But if it does go to 30%, I agree with what Mr. Kraus said, that it needs to have a, you know, a property line limit saying that, because I believe health and safety is access around buildings also. So I think that it would say that a 30%, but maintaining, you know, a certain minimum setback from an interior property line. I think that would be the way to go.
So I'm not sure if that, does that need to be a motion, or?
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Hagani's looking for a motion.
Move to continue it.
And along with that motion, also to leave the hearing open and continue to a date certain.
Okay, so I move to keep the hearing open with a request for more information based upon addition of an administrative process to option B and increasing it to 30%. And that we would continue this hearing to a day certain, and you can tell us what certain day that could be.
Second.
We're looking for a date for you.
Yeah, yeah, be great.
Let's have it July 21st.
July 21st?
Yeah.
As the date certain.
All right.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 So voting for the zero, we've moved this, this motion forward. Okay, we have planning department updates.
We did receive direction yesterday from council to proceed with the North Glendale community plan, so we will be starting that effort. And I'm not sure if we have any other update. Nope, that's it.
I have a question. May I?
Question, Commissioner Landrigan?
A couple of weeks ago, I sent an email to you and Mr. Foy and Mr. Hagani, and you were ill, on the APA issue.
Yeah, we're looking at joining in as a, it would be a planning, it would be the whole planning commission would be joined. Right now, we have individual memberships, but we don't have it for planners, but we don't have one any longer. We used to have them for the planning commission. So we'd be looking at joining everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a cost to that?
Yes.
Is it a lot?
There's a cost to the agency.
There's a cost to us, not to you.
Yes.
No, I just want to know if it's okay for you guys.
It's substantially discounted, though.
Yeah, okay. That's what I meant.
Usually about 45 bucks.
Any other commissioner comments?
Oh, yeah, last, last commission meeting, we had the wireless, the first, our first wireless, we were, what is it called? The wireless pole? We were approving.
One o' pole?
Yes. We were approving our first one since the ordinance. And then Commissioner Landrigan and I, we were talking about having story poles, maybe amended to the code. So for future cases like that, we can have a better idea when we go out and look at the site. Because I think there's a lot of issues with the renderings and the site plan and everything that was given to us last two weeks ago. And we couldn't really tell how big the structure would be or not. It was, it was a little difficult. Then Mr. Foy said he would look into it. I just want to make sure if we can maybe do that before we get more of these cases coming up.
Thank you very much for raising that. We will take a look and see if we actually at the staff level right now in the code, we may have the authority to require them. If that's the case, we'll administratively add that. That's a very good idea. If not, we'll come quickly to you with some ideas on how to address that in the code or administratively.
Commissioner Lee?
I was not part of the discussion on the first case, but I did have a question with the eminent domain, you know, because I've seen some of the business that's been displaced, not, you know, particularly in South Glendale, but in other places. And I was wondering if, like, when you had Americana build out, I know you had Exocite, eminent domain, a few properties, I think. And I know that you, that's the last measure that you take, you know, for development purposes. And you offer market prices and all that, try to make the, you know, the person who's being displaced, trying to accommodate them as much as possible. Is there any type of study that's done? And I am curious, you know, and I'd probably ask the same thing to the people in other cities. Because I've seen some businesses, thriving business that's been displaced because of LAUSD, you know, came in, took the whole street to build a school. And these are some of the really thriving businesses that was there before. And I was at the, I was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and that's why they came to me, because of the business, you know, who were being displaced. Now, some of those businesses were now relocated, and as a result, they lost their livelihood. Now, in case of, I guess, Americana, and I just wanted to revisit that and see if some of the business that, let's say, was been being relocated or being offered, do these people, you know, have right, I know they have a right to compete, to come back into the Americana when retail shops opened up and things like that. But are they given some preferential treatment as far as, you know, because they were there, but they were being displaced, you know, for them to come back instead of on an equal level, maybe, you know, a little bit better, you know, situation? I'm kind of asking this question because it is, it is a tool that I don't think people like to use. But, you know, when we're forced to use it for the development purposes, that we actually do take care of the people that were exercising eminent domain on.
It's, well, that's, there's a lot of issues there. And probably Mark would have been the best person, and Mark Barry, who was the project manager who made the presentation to the staff, would have been the best person to answer it because he was pretty involved in the, in the project. You know, typically owners whose properties are acquired, they have the right to participate. In other words, they have the right to make their own proposal. But through that process, you're right, I mean, it really is the last resort. Most of the properties that were acquired were acquired at varying stages, once through straight negotiations, all the way up through eminent domain. And it's sort of, it's sort of the last resort. But they are, you know, they are entitled to not only compensation for the property, but also any business goodwill, if they have any, and relocation costs as well. So all that's provided for them as well. But I don't know, I don't know in terms of what offers are made to come back into the project. I don't know specifically with respect to that one.
If I remember correctly, I think there were some offers, like, for example, Rite Aid. There, the whole deal was that they would come back to the Americana if...
Yeah, it's got to be on comparable terms, that, you know, it's got to be a reasonable return for the developer and that sort of thing. So, but again, if you want, I can have, have Mr. Barry get in touch with you, because he have a lot more information on that.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Any other commissioner comments or questions?
I might add to that. I think it's a really interesting bit of conversation, because a lot of times, under the guise of regentrification or community redevelopment or light, displacement occurs. And how do you, how do you compassionately deal with citizens in that manner is, I think, a thoughtful discussion. I'm glad you brought it up.
I wanted to ask, but I was late. It took me two hours to get here. Seriously.
Sure.
405-101-134. Wow, what a combination.
I'll give you my secret pass.
Okay.
She got here in 40 minutes, or an hour?
I got here in an hour from GLA.
All right.
Adjournment?
I moved, let me adjourn.
So done.
I need to, I need to find that out, because I came from which GLA area?